I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. In here for a record session of Goldendale City Council for September 6, 2022. It's really fine. We have councilful except for Lauren Maker, and he talked to me this afternoon that he was going to be here. Hopefully he'll walk in any minute, but I don't think so. We have a motion to excuse Lauren from the city.
It's been moved?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Lauren Maker from the Tennessee Goldendale City Council for September 6, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
We don't have a public hearing tonight, but I do have an amendment to the agenda that I would like to present. This is to add a third item under council business, and this has to do with aspect consultant charge change and ASR pilot testing. It's an important piece of the work for our water development in this city, and it would be number three in the council business if you accept that I add that to the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move to add that to the agenda, Mayor. Second.
Been moved and seconded to add item three, aspect consultant contract change and ASR pilot testing to the agenda for this night. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We don't have presentations scheduled or go to department reports.
We need to go back and actually accept approval of the...
Consent agenda.
Yes.
Oh, okay. You're good.
I move to approve amended, well, we amended it.
We amended the approval consent agenda.
Okay, so I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for this night's meeting and for the expenditures and activities of this month. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, we don't have presentations tonight, but we'll go to department reports, and we'll begin with Steve Johnson. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm skipping down about five. I've been away. We'll hear from our chief of, please, Jay Huntsaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, September 4th, a new hire for entry-level police officer position one, Cameron Howell, accepted the conditional offer. So he's on board now, and hopefully we can get the earliest academy date, which is unfortunately the next one with seats open is January, first part of January. Being a small department of under 10 officers, they give us priority because two officers down in a major police department is not really a big deal, but two down in a little police department is a big deal. So hopefully he'll have first priority as far as being selected to the next open class. With everything going on that I had, I wasn't able to give him enough notice, so when I come back from vacation, I'm going to have him come in and introduce him to the council. But then, okay? In the last week and a half, we've had some good investigations. We had a burglary where some stolen guns were taken. Suspects have been identified, and one's been arrested, and a couple of the guns have been recovered. It's still an open investigation, but video went a long way at this residence, so we feel good about that. Also, we recently had a, did a drug operation, which ended up in the arrest of a dealer, but that's still an ongoing investigation, but, you know, so we've kind of put a dent in a little bit of things with the fentanyl along the street. So, everything said and done, we're doing okay. The officers, it's kind of slowed down a little bit, not much, it's just hit and miss, but we're getting a little bit of breathing room, okay? So we might have a potential of a lateral that may be interested coming from the Tri-Cities area, but I'll keep you posted on that. But other than that, we're doing okay right now.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that, the activities. We don't have our fire department represented tonight, but in the department heads meeting this afternoon, Noah Holm did remind us school's out, watch for children, and we have a very high fire presence, so we need to be very, very mindful of what we do and don't do in our yard, our lots, or anywhere else.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I add one more thing?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry for this and stuff. I missed my notes. I got a call or I got an email from dispatch requesting a call from a, a lady in Stockton, California, about one of our officers. And the conversation I had with her, her daughter is, her granddaughter is up here, which is adult, was in a verbal domestic and stuff, but she just highly commended and praised Officer Michael Stelges for the way he handled it and was very compassionate towards it, listened to everybody. She's all, if they're down in Stockton, they say, "We don't get that kind of interaction with law enforcement down here." That is a big metropolis area, so the way things happen with law enforcement in those areas is much different than the small towns, but she, it was about a 15-minute conversation with her, and she could not say enough about how well Officer Stelges did and made her feel safe. So commend that. I put an email out to the mayor and all the officers and to the officer, and the letter of appreciation will fall into his file.
Thank you. Lauren Maker is here. We excuse you, you're welcome to join the council.
Sorry, Green Lady.
That's all right. On the matter of the politeness of Officer Stelges and our police department in general, our fire department as well, that's the kind of reputation Goldendale very much wants, politeness, consideration, and willing to listen. Those are important things in any city, but especially a struggling rural city that would like that reputation all the time. Thank you, we really appreciate what he's done.
I'll pass it on.
We're going now to council business, and we have Public Works. Pat, did you?
Yeah, I got some things. First, I would like, I've asked Austin to enter tonight to talk about issues with Fire Street, if that's okay?
Yes.
Under department head report.
An update on Fire Street. It's going slowly at the minute. We've had, our, getting concrete work done has been a challenge. We've had it, it was scheduled, I think, four different times finally before we were able to get concrete curb poured, and so it was finally done last week. And we still don't have a hard date for paving. I was told maybe Friday, but we can't get the subcontractor paving to confirm on that. And then we still have to get sidewalks done too, which we don't have a date on. So at the minute, things are a challenge out there. We're working with the contractor the best we can, but we're still, he's struggling too. These are subcontractors that are under contract to perform, and so he's struggling as well. So it's just a tough situation.
Let's see, quick question. Did they get all the draftings opened back after date?
I don't know for sure on that one. I know they were working on it, but I don't know if they were all opened up.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Thursday, we will be having our airport contractor pre-construction meeting to move that project forward, so that will be getting scheduled and done this year. It's been a challenging year for that project as well, given that the marketing contractor was unable to perform the work, and so we had to re-sign that contract. Public Works has been, the last couple of weeks, painting crosswalks, and they did start some crack sealing, but the crack sealing machine they ran had broke down, so we're waiting for another one, which should be back here next week. So we'll continue at that point. There, let's see. Oh, so one issue we did talk about, the city staff meeting, was we're having park vandalism really, it's really picking up. We're having homeless people locking themselves in public bathrooms, and then they're getting, starting to get aggressive with city staff. Their staff goes there and we're trying to get them to exit the building. So in that conversation, the staff is working with the chief. We're going to be reviewing some art codes that we currently have and what we can do to modify those codes and enforce a curfew on those parks. And we also talked about the police department setting a time schedule of when they will be locking the bathrooms at night, and then we will be opening them in the morning, and we will also put that in the municipal code. That's what we're looking for. But it's taking a lot of time. They are causing more damage than just the bathrooms, or it's playground equipment, it's picnic tables, it's several things, but the city staff is updated. So we kind of already got an update on Fire Street. We do have a Public Works meeting tomorrow. We'll be talking about the tip of Todd Chase. And I think you're going to be there, aren't you, Mayor?
Yes.
We do have a draft map. I think it's insufficient for the area of what we need. I think we need to sit down as a committee and come up with a better, what we feel is a better map. From my understanding, the tip doesn't have to be connected. We can have one tip in two different locations, and we're still entitled to another tip in two different locations. So that's something we need to look at. I know there was interest in the downtown area. I think that's something we really need to, you know, it'd be nice to have something in the urban commercial district as well as the residential district, so there's that that we need, those type of zones would be nice. The, the Public Works has been fixing potholes as well. I would say they're completely complete with that, but they're, they're to keep an eye on it and see if they, and drive around and see if there's any more potholes left, and they'll be working on those. And then we're working on, we'll be working on updating some other codes over the next several months, and trying to, you know, with the mayor to get them ready for next spring, mainly on, there's other issues, but mainly on code enforcement, a lot of it has to do with code enforcement, so that we have some better processes other than just sending out a certified layout letter for notification. There's other methods of notification we need to do, because people are not picking up their letters. So we need to start posting the property as well when it's in violation and taking a picture, little style, date stamp photo, so that we can verify that if it goes into a court system, we can give them a lawful notification. Other than that, just some land use issues and mainly just a lot of deeply routine stuff.
Good question. I know council has asked before for scheduled meetings for ordinance committee. That has been an issue both for the police department in the past, fire department and Public Works, where the ordinance have no teeth, they're not actually enforceable. I've heard that from unsains, that there, there's an ordinance, however, it's not enforceable, therefore it's not an actionable item. So if we can get those written already, that would be great. I know Steve has asked before, instead of, instead of being reactive because something's happening, we could have been doing this, I'd say, at least a year or two or before when Steve joined the council, he started asking staff to schedule those.
Yeah, I have no problem scheduling those. I have, I think, talked to Steve and the mayor about usually zoning coordinates are usually built before the planning commission. That's usually one of their primary responsibilities. Now, if you guys want to do two separate meetings, that's fine, but usually that's how it is, and usually there should be a regular scheduled, at least one meeting about the planning commission and dealing with. But when you're working on codes, we're probably, you know, to really get anything done, it's going to probably have to be twice a month, or you're not going to get anything done once a month, because by the time 30 days comes around, everybody forgets what they talked about 30 days ago. So that's something, and, you know, going through codes is very challenging, because what we don't want to do is repeat codes, and our code does that currently, and sets it different over here than over here, which opens up to different interpretation and different debates. What we need to do is when we create a new chapter is make sure we're referring to the section we want to apply to. Like if it's a code or, you know, we're talking about zoning issue and fencing in a particular zoning, we should have a, you know, a fencing ordinance that says, and we just refer to that ordinance, or fencing referred to this ordinance. Or you can have it directly in every particular zoning issue, but you got to have it for every zoning.
I agree, it should be broken down into sections, but I know there's ordinances, and I can't think of all of them off the top of my head, but there's ordinances that require law enforcement action. And from what I've heard is it's not something that an officer can take action the way it's written, because it goes nowhere, and our attorney dismisses it. So those, those kind of things can be reviewed. Yeah, prosecuting attorney.
If we write a ticket under the state Washington's ticket system, not, not the Goldendale City parking tickets, which we need the hearing officer for.
Yeah, so that was another issue that we'd like to go to. You know what an hearing examiner is? We'd rather proceed towards, and I've talked to several council members about proceeding towards an hearing examiner, which that person actually has a legal background to work as a judge in those situations where we don't end up with emotional arguments, it's based on the law, and it works a lot better for us too, is that if they make a ruling because they felt that we, we were misinterpreting our code, then we can actually discuss that ruling with that individual afterwards, of how can we improve this code to enforce the intent of what we were, what the city council was trying to achieve? And then we can make those modifications at that time.
I just have one question. Pat, on the airport, the grant that we received, I forget what the bid was, are we using all that grant or the bid that went out?
I don't know what the total amount of the grant was you received. I can look at it and get that to you.
Okay, okay, I'm just curious.
I think we're using a bigger portion of it if not.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, thank you.
Regarding parks, have we considered possibly surveillance cameras? That will help. I mean, the chief is already galling, but they do help. I mean, it is public property, we can set standards as far as curfews, or after that curfew died, then I would believe they would be trespassing or breaking some kind of enforceable rule.
Right, well, it used to be done, but the only park that's posted right now is in the park rules down there at DeConey, and so the park closes at 10:00 PM. None of the other parks are posted. We have that. If you're after the parks after 10:00 PM, we, you know, tell, make contact with people that are just staying in the parks after 10:00, and you need to leave, right? If they refuse, then it becomes a trespass issue, right? And we will give them a warning, look, okay, now, now you're trespassing, you need to leave. And if they refuse again, yes, we could criminally cite them or and/or arrest them. So, yeah, but once they're told, given the knowledge that the park's closed and they got to leave, it can go to trespass very easily. So, but better posting on all three parks. Hornet Brook's not a big one, but there has been some issues there according to Public Works recently, just one little minor incident, but Hornet Brook and World War II Park and then Coney need to be posted better with newer signs saying, "Park closes at 10:00", make sure that's in the ordinance and stuff, so we, we take care of those matters if it arises. We normally don't get a lot of guff when we tell people, "Park's closed, leave," right?
And then, as far as the surveillance cameras, I think that should be a consideration.
Right, right, and Pat and I have talked about a system that has something to do with the lighting.
Yeah, remember, you were, were you on the way? You were.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. So remember, we, we talked about parking enforcement? Oh, it's the same technology.
Okay, right.
So basically what you're doing, that's the other thing, is if we just build the cameras, you'd have to have somebody either the next day review the footage, which is not going to do any good, because they're probably not there anymore, or you'd have to have somebody watching the cameras all night long, other than unless if they were vandalizing something or things like that, but it takes, that's going to take a lot of man hours.
Right.
Where if the parks are closed at 10 o'clock and this picks up a human being moving around in there, and that technology can actually call the police department to respond.
Yeah, yeah, I'm aware that it will have limited effect, but nevertheless, I think it would be helpful.
Very helpful. If the contrast of the video is very good, and it doesn't take much anymore these days to have a high definition system, definition system, excuse me, for identification purposes, yeah, that would be a great, but video is invaluable, I mean, Century's market, I mean, it's just fantastic, Dollar General's video is just fantastic. I mean, they get a theft issue, I mean, they got to go out those doors, and there they are, there's their face. So it's worked very well. Video is a big help.
We can look at, look at the cost, if you would like us to.
Absolutely.
We've talked about that for the last several years, having a camera, especially down at DeConey Park, and it seemed like I understood that the new technology, you'd be able to watch that at the police station and maybe even in the patrol cars.
I can check with the Department of Justice, DOJ, and see if they still have a program out on the cameras that can send the, send the video to the patrol units, something like that, so. It's, the technology is there, it's getting it and getting it set up in the right places, right? And they've even got equipment to where you can reposition and move to different areas at a time, you don't have to be stagnant one location permanent, you know, you put it up for a while and then move to another area.
Yeah, I'd like to say, but maybe we can coordinate that or in conjunction with this new lighting situation we're dealing with.
Yeah, it can go over the same frequency as what I understand. Is that the way you turn it on, that it would still be sent out through the same signal system, video?
Handled by the same software. I don't know how they transmit the video signal, if it's, but essentially probably Wi-Fi, obviously Wi-Fi is my guess, yeah.
I was under the impression that it had that capacity.
Yeah, it can integrate it into the same interface, it seemed like.
We didn't ask for cost on that, by the way. We're just curious.
That wasn't included in the...
That wasn't, no, but now here we've got a situation where there is damage being done, that we can weigh that against the cost of the technology.
Yeah, we specifically asked about parking since it's in the Spring Court Road, that we can't let tires in the road to determine how long cars may park. So that kind of leaves it very difficult for that officer to write a parking ticket, unless if he sat there for basically two hours and made sure that car didn't, right? So this technology would photo stamp that time, that car parked, and then we'd watch it, and it can watch multiple cars all the time, and then if it goes over that two-hour mark for two-hour parking, it would notify us, yeah.
And on the issue of parking and stuff, just to let the council know, is the parking issue we have over there near the Catholic Church, that's been an ongoing issue, so we are working with the owner of those vehicles, and the city has come up with an idea, right, that possibly entering into a mandatory manner of understanding to get that issue taken care of once and for all. So we're working on it, and he's willing to work with us, so we're giving him the solution, and hopefully he'll follow through, because we're going to help him.
We'll have to bring that agreement to the council.
Right, right.
You're talking about that Eastwood behind the building?
No, no, we're talking the parking over there on South Shuster and Eastburg and right across the street from the Catholic Church.
He has several automobiles sort of down the street.
Oh.
There's like eight or nine or something like that.
Right, yeah. And right now, there's several of them that got flat tires because he was a victim of somebody coming around.
He's willing to enter into what's called a voluntary abatement agreement with the city and talk about agreement, so that he understands that we will give him a place to park his cars on, back here, your back here, for six months, and then if he doesn't do it, we will...
Pat, can you speak up a bit? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry you're talking that way.
We were entering into a local, our voluntary abatement agreement with the property owner to work and give them a place to park those cars for six months while they work to find another place where they can put them off-street, and then, you know, that's the whole goal is we, we want to work with people, we want to try to help them, but we can't let them keep violating the code either. We don't want to just go out and punish them. I'm, I'm willing to work with anybody if they're willing to work with us.
Beautiful. Thank you. Yep. How is it going to take to put up signs for the parks and just, you know, that first phase anyway to see?
Yeah, we'll go see what's in the code. I haven't had time to look to see what's there, and what's there in, I mean, we can put some signs up, but really, without that code, we don't really have the key to enforce it, because it is public property, so we need that ordinance. It's not like trespassing on your property.
So we should be able to, I mean, get the ordinance committee together and then get the signage up fairly short-term, and then, you know, see how it works out, and then long-term, look at other solutions like you guys talked about.
We have to order signs, those take a couple of weeks.
That'd be a good first, first thing on the agenda for the first meeting, I think. Yeah. Break the ice with that one.
Yes, it'll make a difference.
Oh, boy. So I'll review the park ordinance tomorrow and make thoughts of it, so when we have our meeting tomorrow, I think we can actually, because it is a public works issue.
It is. In fact, most of these issues come back to law enforcement or Public Works eventually. They work their way back to those two departments, so.
I will make, I'll be in Z, and then by the time we're ready, I'm sure, are you going to be around, you're not around tomorrow, are you?
No, I'll be going on vacation for tomorrow.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll go over.
Speaking of, I just want to note too, that this is, this issue's been brought to me by members of the community, and some issues up in my neighborhood, and so being on council, of course, like, you know, brought to my attention, and Jay has been super helpful, and the PD has been super helpful in response, so just thanks to this department for taking care of those things.
Yeah, and I guess the minivan or the car up there, something got ticketed today, and Smith, concerned Smith is continuing to work on that. The problem up there, when I get back, if it hasn't been rectified, I'm going to send him a letter on letterhead, that this continual problem of bringing these rigs in and leaving them like he does is going to stop.
And the issue in the parks with some kids, brought to my attention this meeting, you guys are right on top of that too, so just really appreciate the response.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
Anything else?
No, I was gonna want to come to.
Well, are there other questions or comments from the council too, or Public Works to make?
Any, any update on the parking lot on South Holden and Main Street?
What was that?
Any update for the parking lot being finished on South Holden and Main Street?
Oh, the county, or the different down there?
Oh, yeah, they are, are working on it. I, I can get an update for you though.
Yeah, there, there's just a fence there and nobody around.
One other thing, there was a business owner down there, I don't wanna say any names, that tore, ripped out a public sidewalk, I put another one in, that it, we're gonna have to have it removed, it does not meet ADA standards. It's just unacceptable, we've met with him. He, I, I told him I would bring this up to the city council, but he was willing to want to know that the city would do it and that he would reimburse the city. I'm not a fan of that idea personally, but it's gonna cost him a lot more, because we have to pay the yearly wage. I don't think once he sees the numbers, he's gonna like that. But if that's what the council would like us to do, that's fine, but I would definitely make him bond the entire project upfront. So that on the backside, if he did not pay, then we don't have to report and file.
What is he paying for? Because he tore up the last one and.
He tore out the sidewalk.
So now he has to pay to fix it?
Well, he put a new one in, but the new sidewalk, he, they didn't follow ADA requirements, so it, it has to come out.
What, how much length have you talked about?
Oh, there's a.
Thirty, forty feet at least, forty, fifty feet, fifty, sixty feet.
I probably say.
Hundred feet.
Hundred feet.
So my question is, why did he feel the need to take care of it himself? Instead of the city taking care of it in the first place? And do we, do we make it available for them or any citizen to come in and say, hey, here's a concern of mine, before they go ahead and tear out? Because I know they can say.
That's what didn't happen. He, that would have happened upfront.
Yeah.
We could give him better advice on how to do it. Now, if they did came in to get a permit and we, I, I got a hold of our building inspector, and I know the building inspector provided them the cut sheets on how ADA sidewalk had to be constructed, but they weren't following. So it's. I'm mainly, what it looked like is the concrete, concrete probably came in a little hot and got way ahead of them, and they just kind of.
Laid it out. I'm just concerned, I know I've seen in cities where Public Works is behind by years or decades, and citizens take it upon themselves to patch the road, patch the sidewalks, tear out sidewalks, fix roads, paint their own crosswalks.
Yeah.
And don't want to go there.
Yeah, you, yeah, exactly. But sidewalks are their own little unique.
Yeah.
Issues, because under working state law, the business owner, the property owner is responsible for the maintenance and potentially replacement of the sidewalk in front of the building. The, even though it's in the public roadway, but there's some very specific rules on how that has to be handled, or who's responsible, or who's not responsible, or are both parties responsible. But when we don't have an opportunity to go up there and look at it and they've ripped it out, that puts 100% of the responsibility on.
Oh, I, I would almost say that, like you said, it would be prevailing wages and something else for the city to manage as opposed to give direction and the individual, seek a proper contractor to take care of it.
Yeah, do you wanna bond the project upfront? I mean, if that's the way you wanna do it, I wouldn't bond the project upfront. You know, it, it's 10% of the value, so let's say it costs, I don't know what it's gonna cost, I don't think it's gonna cost $30,000. I don't think it's going to be that, but if I, they would, that would cost them roughly $3,000 to bond it upfront.
And that would be, that would be maybe the second item that the ordinance committee can tackle is the sidewalk issue, because it is, it's, it's an animal of its own, and it's, it's really got some ambiguities.
Well, it's, it's been brought up before, I think it was Darlene, when she was on council, she brought up the whole sidewalk on Main Street being uneven and, I guess, while it's sizable for ADA compliance, the cracks and lifting is not ADA compliant.
Yeah, I agree.
So, I mean, that, I think that's another issue that maybe getting ahead of it for not, for this individual, but for other business owners and saying, hey, here's a packet for your side of the responsibility.
We're, we're looking at, you know, I, I love the study that's gonna happen tomorrow.
Right.
But we are looking at funding options for Main Street downtown.
I mean, we're looking, we're looking for concrete on buyer's stove, so.
Which is gonna be extremely expensive, because those are very wide sidewalks. You know, but it's very unique to downtown Golddale. I mean, I've never seen a city as small have a sidewalk that wide, and it's like the minds that have that.
Oh, and I know like, like all those business owners are fixing up their shops.
Yeah.
Right, if you go down Main Street, they had to close down during COVID, a few of them, and they came back, and they are way nice looking. And, you know, they're trying to paint the front, you know, and fix everything up. So if it comes up, like this individual wanted to fix it up, unfortunately, maybe didn't hire the right people.
There is a way to use hotel, hotel tax money for sidewalks in tourist districts. So we would just have to make a legitimate argument that it is a tourist district down there. And we're working on that.
If the Chamber of Commerce keeps doing what they're doing, it totally is a tourist.
That's what we're working on, so we can get those elements in place and start looking at using some hotel, hotel tax money too. It's not gonna pay for it all, but it's, it's gonna give us a big chunk of money that we can maybe match with TIB, Transportation Development Board, and actually with the street curves and sidewalks down there. But that's gonna open up some other issues is, we probably, why we have that road open, the upgrade, the storm, and potentially a sewer, the water isn't gonna get shake. I, I can't speak on the sewer without looking at more and talking to the curro about the condition of the sewer down there.
And just so you have a heads up, previous council members also mentioned having electricity on the sidewalk for.
Yeah, that's something that we need to plan out too, is.
While we, while we're on the.
Yeah.
The whole remodel.
We need to plant out an irrigation system down there, particularly if you're gonna have, you know, wine barrel flower pots or some other type of flower pots down there, or flowers on light poles, you know, some seating area down there, you know, some concrete round picnic tables that are concrete with cotton creek benches would be nice as well down there. That's something that'll all be discussed in the design and layout of the project and for the, and they have driven the tourist area down there.
I don't know how everybody wants to go on the sidewalk.
Well, Steve.
Regarding the sidewalks, I know we're focusing on downtown, which is good and absolutely necessary. It's been a long time coming. But in regards to sidewalks, the same code or rule applies throughout the city. There are some sidewalks in this town that don't even resemble sidewalks anymore in front of residences, in the residential areas. So keep that in mind, you know, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna make this happen, let's make it happen.
Do the best we can.
Throughout the city, because there are, there are some, within a block of downtown, there are sidewalks that are hazardous, to say the least. I mean, they make the sidewalk, the concrete downtown look like a freeway. They aren't that bad.
So, Pat, question, I know other cities have had where, like you said, that in a business, they're responsible for the sidewalk. But I know there's other places that have ordinances that say for new developments, you're responsible for like a second lane up road. If there is two lanes, the city's responsible for the center, they'll add another one, one that's developed and/or sidewalks.
I'm not sure.
Because I know there's still some development out there.
Are you talking about half-street development?
Yeah, half-street.
Okay, yeah, so.
Or, you know, because we have a lot of empty fields around town still, that there's no sidewalk there, but when it's.
So as the, depending how our ordinance reads, as, which I believe it does read, once the development occurs, the, the sidewalk has to go in. But if there's no curb, that's really challenging, and it's even challenging afterwards, because the sidewalk should really go in with the project. You know, because, because if there's no curb there, there's nowhere to set the grade of the sidewalk, and you don't want, or we're gonna have to go up there and survey it aloud and say, this is what the curb would be, and you gotta build it in front of your property from this elevation to this elevation, and here's, here's the standard. And then we would have to do that for every single lot, which it can be done, but there needs to be engineering drawings on place, because it may take, you know, 20 years for it to fill in. And we want it to run consistently and true, so that the gutter drain and everything is draining correctly. Even when you just have a curb and later on, somebody comes and puts a sidewalk behind it, we still have to do that same thing, just not as strictly what we want the sidewalk to be consistent. You know, we don't wanna gray sidewalk and a green sidewalk and a blue sidewalk, and maybe we do.
Each little piece, yeah.
Thank you, Pat, for your comprehensive report and along, I think we need to move on.
Sorry, I'm, going back to the same, you asked a question, which way does the council wanna go? Going back to the initial point of the sidewalk.
Of the one, the.
Of the property owner, did you need an answer for that?
Yeah, it would be nice to have an answer, you know, I, I gotta respond to him at some point here really shortly to get it, if, get the project going, because that sidewalk needs to come out, otherwise they'll take it back in.
I would like, I would make the suggestion that Pat is allowed to at least give him that option, that the city could do it, may do it, whatever, but just as an option. But have him or try to have them do it on their own first, with another contractor or whatever, but at least give Pat the ability to use that as an option. Not necessarily a done deal, I don't understand, but.
Agreed.
I agree.
I'll go back. Can we do it on a consensus? Can we do that on a consensus? Is that sufficient?
To, to give Pat the direction you want to go with this? Counselor, their questions on this, are you agree that we take this approach? This is, this is simply a plan of how we all work, but it's not, this is not doing anything yet.
I'm not sure why we're offering this or what the benefit is.
Well, get the sidewalk fixed, but ultimately, the property owner should, it's his responsibility.
So maybe a more full flush job proposal, and maybe the property owner, thirty, assistance from the city should.
Just assistance. Okay.
That's just my thought.
I think it needs to be on the agenda where we can have some points and, and there's, there's a lot of underlying questions we need to address, and I think if we had it on the agenda, we could plan out some of that, Pat would be able to have points to help us get through this type of decision. Because we're going from having the city building like sidewalks to any homeowner taking it up, and that is an absolute challenge for any homeowner to do something like that. That's, that's heavy construction, so I did mine, and it was really a tough job.
You did hire somebody to do it, you just stood there.
I don't think I did. Because that was 20 years ago. If it's, say, Pat, if we go to Steve Johnston and.
I'd be out.
I could turn this off.
Are you, we're going to council business?
Yes, exactly, bulk water station.
Yeah.
So.
Focus, guys.
We were asked to present some more information on the bulk water, is that where we're at?
Yes, yes.
So currently, the city has 39 bulk water users. They use 43, approximately 43,000 gallons, or cubic feet, excuse me, of water a year at a rate of 22 cents per cubic foot, generating $9,460. If you compare that with residential, that same amount of water, so the city for residents, they pay actually is a little less than 1%, or 1 cent per cubic foot, and they generate $1,195.63 when purchasing the same amount of water. So basically, it would take roughly about, at the current rate, if we didn't raise the rate, I would recommend raising the rate, probably a little bit some, but at the current rate, take about five, eight, three years to recoup our cost for bulk water users.
That looks good, thanks for putting that extra information together for us, Pat. I think you're right, and maybe we need to look at raising the rates and maybe, because I would move to approve the, the authorized city staff to proceed with the purchase of the bulk water fill station and other improvements with a calendar mark to check the cost, the maintenance cost in two years or revisit the rates. Just that IT cost is high or something like that, we wanna revisit the rates and make sure we cover.
Yeah, they, they do come up with a two-year IT support, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, just after two years and it's no longer, comes with it that we're having to pay out of pocket, like make sure we're generating enough revenue in terms of those costs. For the IT or any other maintenance.
Yeah, I think if we raise the rates, we probably can get it down to three and a half years. This is where I was figuring it would be more beneficial, five years is a long stretch to recover your cost on this bulk water.
Oh, so you think we should start out with a higher rate than what's stated here?
Well, we, we could do that, but we're doing a rate study this year. So that rate study will, we will look at bulk water and that rate setting, come back with a recommendation at that time. So I'm not saying that raise it currently, but I think we can, you know, if we get that done in the next six months, in two year, we'll, we should be able to lower that time for, you know, full reimbursement on our.
I guess that's kinda like a friendly amendment to the motion that I suggested that we would revisit the rates in one year. Approving what's proposed yet?
No.
Second?
Oh, I moved to approve the, and authorize city staff to proceed with the purchase of the bulk water fill station and other improvements with a calendar mark of one year from today to revisit the rates.
Second?
It's been moved and stated to approve the authorization of the city staff to proceed with purchase of the bulk water full fill station and other improvements that will cover accelerating or completing the cost, covering the cost of the equipment within one year. I think I understand, okay. Any further questions or comments on this motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you. The next item is the smart street light management and maintenance options. Pat, I think you have the.
Yeah, so we, the committee met on this, and I guess I would let the committee speak for themselves, for the members of what their recommendation is. for the members of what their recommendation is. And for the three committee members, I do have a draft that they sent over a contract. But before we presented that here, I wanted you guys to review it and make sure it is what you were asking for.
Yeah, I guess as part of the committee, I'll say that I was impressed by the technology solution that this organization offered. And it sounds like they're providing a lot of similar services to a lot of other municipalities. So definitely feel comfortable working with them. The one caveat we asked for was just some sort of additional guarantee that if they were to go out of business during that first five-year time period, when we're paying for the service up there for the first five years, that there's some way that we're compensated for that. So whether they give us a full software package or reimburse some funds, just ensure that we have a way to maintain our system going forward even if they were to go out of business. But I don't see that as being an issue, given their size and number of customers they currently serve. But given the history on these streetlights, I thought it was a good caveat.
I do too. It's an insurance policy, you know? We don't want to end up in a situation where we don't know how to use them and this place goes out of business.
It's a very tough spot.
There is a clause in that contract that addresses that, so I'll just let you go. Okay.
No, like, I think the committee probably recommends...
Yeah, definitely. Recommends option two, which was to not, not only, because there were two options.
That's right.
Sorry, back up a little bit. I forgot that part. And that slightly, the higher cost option is to replace everything and move over to their software system. And that seemed like a lot better option. And I think, in my opinion, likely to be nearly the same cost versus the additional maintenance we're likely to face with trying to make do with what we have as it is.
Absolutely.
That's what I thought too. If you try to take the cheap way out, it's going to cost you more in the long run.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions before we call for a motion? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to authorize the city staff to proceed with the contract negotiations and report back to the city council for review and a vote. And propose contract with, was it Dian?
Dian.
Dian.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize city staff to proceed with contract negotiations and report back to the city council for review and vote on proposed, the proposed contract with Dian Technologies.
May I can add one quick, to, there was a second option that the committee recommended?
Correct. That, that's what we're, the motion is...
For the second option?
For the second option.
Yeah, that's it.
Expensive one.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to be clear that that's what it was.
So we're clear?
Well, Pat, you were going to present what, what was it, the contractual...
Yeah, I have one online. I was going to just, I didn't get it till late, like, 45 minutes before this meeting time, but I printed a mouse and there's a copy there. I, you can get it stopped by tomorrow, I'll get you a copy and then so you guys can review it and then get back. Okay. Or while you get ready for tomorrow, anybody wants to...
That's true.
That's true. Okay.
We have a motion? We have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, we just need to vote, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is the addition we made to the agenda. And this is the Aspect Consulting Contract Change and ASR Pilot Testing. And Pat, might you also present that?
Yeah, so our contract with Aspect Consulting, where we're in Harold Dale, on a very specific topic with ASR. So what this is doing is modifying that agreement. So there's a broader areas that we can discuss, issues for them without helping to go back to full RFP, request for proposals. And modify that so we can negotiate with them. And it is kind of time-sensitive as well. In here, there's, if you, back here, there's the ASR pilot test for the network. This is kind of a graph of how you submit language. Well, basically, grant request to Department of Ecology for the ASR pilot test. Just look at this document, it's here. I have reviewed it. And what we're requesting would be requesting a 592,500 dollars in grant to move into pilot testing of the ASR.
So this proposal is requesting a change of scope of work in order to develop a grant application for that amount of...
Yeah, it's not, it'll help with that grant application, but it applies broader than that too. So we don't have to come back here every little time. We need to have some specific question that's outside the current contract. I guess this is more of a general consulting contract with that, on that topic, on those hot water issue topics.
What's the maximum dollar amount that we're approving here? Or is it...
Well, here's a fee schedule. If, if there's no dollar amount tied to this right now. Here's a fee schedule of how they bill on our topics here. It's the second page.
And so no cap on the number of hours of these different consultants that might be utilized?
There's, well, I have no intent to utilize them right now, but, because the grant money will be that. But we need to have broader issues, which will be covered by budget or interior contracts, budget anyway. We won't exceed that number, or exceed that number, excuse me.
Exceed which number?
The money we have for...
Oh, I got you. Thank you.
Yes.
You're, you're asking whether we're committing to any dollar amount at this point?
Or maximum dollar amount. I mean, I guess the contract I would expect to be like a not-to-exceed amount or something. But what you're saying is there is a not-to-exceed amount. It's the annual engineering budget that is set by the city.
It's like the sole agreement we have, that's in our general contract, our engineer, to discuss certain topics with. We have a budget number for that every year. We just don't exceed that budget number. We probably totally bring it back to council and say, why we're exceeding that budget number?
Okay. Right now, we're trying to get the grant fund.
I, I'm tracking what you're requesting.
Any further questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to authorize the mayor to enter into the Aspect Consulting contract and proceed with the submittal of the DOE ASR pilot testing grant request.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to enter into the Aspect Consulting contract and proceed with the submittal of the DOE ASR pilot testing grant request. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, sir.
Pardon?
Aye. I was just pondering if we could also ask about other alternatives, you know, well-being, additional well, besides just the ASR, using surface water to recharge it. Just something to think about, but...
Well, there are always other options. But the point of the ASR may result in well-being drift at some point. What the object of the aquifer storage recovery is during the winter months when sales are down, down and the public is not using as much water is to take that surplus water and shove it down in their decline aquifer and store it for peak season and then start pumping that out. I mean, June, you know, late June through July, August and September during peak season where we have that water stored down there and bring it out instead of just letting it flow on by us.
Yeah, no, I get ASR. I just, you know, make sure they're not just pulling in on that one solution just in case there's another good option out there.
Oh, we're always looking for additional water rights or different additional options, yeah.
Thank you, Pat. We'll go on to the next item on the agenda, resolutions. And Resolution 723, amending Resolution 604. This is a housekeeping item.
Yeah.
And Pat, might you...
We need to get somebody else to talk to that, so. So Resolution 604 is authorizing certain staff members to invest in the local government investment pool. Currently, Larry Conning names on this as something that's already been authorized in the past. We're not asking for anything new. We just, it specifically says Larry Conning that we need to have changed to me and Sandy, so...
Could those just be position titles so that anyone in those positions can...
We can do that, yeah.
Do that and we can change it?
Oh, no, I think it has to say a specific name, that's why we did it now.
I think so, yeah. It's an unusual step.
Now that I recall it, it did have to be a specific name.
Well, Mayor, I still move if we'd like to changes.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 723, amending Resolution number 604, authorizing investment of the city of Golden Tail moneys and the local government investment pool. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And now, few of the survivors proposing all the way through the evening, report of officers who will begin with the council and Steve Johnston.
Nothing tonight, other than I just would like to carry on with the request for the scheduling of these various committees. I appreciate Phil speaking up on it. I think everybody is pretty much on board. Somebody's going to have to do it. There's basically three ways it can be done. The council can request it. The city administrator or the mayor can say it's going to happen. So we've got the mechanisms in place to do it. So I think we just need to keep pushing in that direction and get some actual scheduled meeting times for all the committees, all the committees. In fact, we're coming up to the time of the year where it's budget time.
Yes.
And I would like at this time to request a bunch of workshop, at least one, if not two.
We discussed that, exactly. Yes, it's a good idea.
So on budget, Larry's going to come in next week and we're going to work on budget. And after that, we can get a draft in place that we can have a workshop.
Okay.
Steve, when you say a budget workshop, you mean like a full council workshop afternoon?
Yeah. I mean, full afternoon, yeah. Lunch is served.
Well, that's the conversation we're definitely going to have because we've got to get rid of the, they don't call it Parker moneys anymore. It's the COVID money.
Right.
Yeah. We, that's going to be a big discussion of where that money needs to go. That's, you know, right at a million dollars. And the council's going to have...
Do you see where you said?
Yeah, we got to get it done, so. The next year, we, it's, I think we have to spend some time in early 2024 or early February.
Sure there is. Is that spent or committed?
Aye, please. Anyway, that's it. Thank you, thank you.
I'm all in favor of the committee meetings, but realize that when we decide we're going to have a committee meeting, there's quite a bit of additional work to get ready for that meeting. Otherwise, we're just sitting there looking at each other. Agenda and program and... And so these committee members very often are involved in the entire process that way. It makes it more efficient and clearer and we can move quickly.
Well, I think along those lines, Your Honor, the committee members will have something to offer up.
Oh, yes.
For discussion.
That's why we're doing that.
Aside from what, what Pat yourself may want to throw on the table. So I don't think there'll be any shortage of conversation.
I don't think so.
One thing is, you know, for the council, they consider, there's a lot of committees. And I don't, you know, I would like the council to consider taking some of the committees and joining them together so that there's, I'm not happy to attend four, eight or nine committee meetings a month at night, so. And I, I think there's a lot of topics that can actually be combined together.
Absolutely.
Make that a part of the issue.
Well, a good example is, we started off when I first came on. Got everybody all fired up on the traffic safety committee. We met once and discussed some stuff. But again, it comes right back to public works for much. And so, I mean, that's a good example, as much as anything. And so, I mean, we have, that sense, have needed to. So, but yeah, that's spot on. I'm trying to make this, simplify it somewhat.
Exactly. Move it along.
Yes, yes.
Dave, join us.
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Well, I have my own committee thing I wanted to bring up also. We're on that Parks Community Development Committee, Phil Berto, myself and Steve. And, you know, we had, we had two meetings and we got a little bit of progress going. But I'd like to reach out to everybody that's on that committee because we have some really talented people on that committee that are willing to help us find grant opportunities and everything. And we, I think we want to take advantage of that. And so, you know, sometime I'd like to get together and talk about when we can schedule another meeting and take advantage of those people that are in the community, you know, that are in partnership. They have a lot to offer. And so, but, you know, we want it to be a constructive meeting, like you said, where we're not just sitting there and shooting the breeze, you know? Get, get that committee to have an actual goal. You know, we did, we made a first few steps, but we haven't met since the beginning of June.
Right.
And so that'd be something, you know, maybe some more of us can talk about later. And I have the email contacts for everybody that's in that committee. And, yeah, that's my committee talk. Okay.
We need to send out some, remember, I need to talk to you. I think I brought this up before.
Yeah.
Where we're at.
Right. We've taken inventory.
Okay.
And they always keep it moving. You can use this council room or you can use my office or any other facility like that to make it as quick and easy as possible.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
And you have cold water.
Yes.
Nothing else?
That's all for me, thank you, Mayor.
Lauren Maynor.
I just thank Pat for his work here in his early days with the city. And again, thanks to the PD for answering some questions and helping deal with some different situations around town in the last few weeks. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nothing, Mayor.
Nothing. Andy, how?
I do, I have a couple of things. First, I want to thank, I think Sandy for the well-written out minutes. Since I joined the council, I wish we had detailed minutes like this. And this is perfect. I can glance through it and whatever I miss is there and whatever I don't remember is also there.
It helps.
So thank you so much for that. And I think Pat is doing a good job. I think it's worth mentioning. I've talked to him a handful of times already on different things. And it's, it's nice to have that constant communication and seeing where things are going. So that's good. And that's all I have, just, thanks.
Tyler Waller.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment on the summer. The crew that was walking the flowers, they did a good job. And I feel that the flowers looked great. Also, I want to kind of recap on the, several weeks ago, when the International Women's Pilot Association were in town. They were there, flew in the airport. There's about 15 of them. The city provided transportation for them. They, we took them to the hotel. Then after that, they had the dinner and they, we took them up to the observatory. They had a great time and they said they would really like to come back again. I don't know when, but they said they would definitely like to come back. So it was an opportunity to show our airport and also show our city and then again, the observatory. So I think that's what I have here.
Thank you. The first meeting they had in our airport. Nobody really knew about it. Nobody was there to help them. Nobody got them into town. They sat there around their planes and discussed their business and left. It was a very bad impression of Golden Tail. This is far, far better. Far better, must work with that.
Yeah, right.
I appreciate all the work Tyler did on that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good job, well done.
Yeah, they said that, you know, the, the old booth was fully yellow jackets. Yeah, they said that, you know, the, the old booth was fully yellow jackets. Yeah, it just, I thought, oh, we can do better than that, so that's how I left it.
You've done it.
But anyway, well, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
On the mayor's remarks, I have just a few things I feel I need to at least start the discussions on. First, to thank Andy of Mayor Proteon for filling in while I was, I always call it sick leave. When you're volunteering, you don't have sick leave, you're just away. So I really appreciated that a lot. I didn't have to worry. I could see it on YouTube, the whole bit, so it was really good. I appreciate everybody working so well with Andy as well. And the mayor's days filled with some unusual things sometimes. And today, it was a fellow that came and we've had this, this request a number of times over the years. I've made it a number of times as well. The problems with the deer and what they're doing to damaged gardens and yards, property. And the frustration, this particular person was just incredibly frustrated. He has a big, good garden and it's almost entirely destroyed by the deer eating his melons, eating his squashes. Incredible. So I'm gonna be contacting our county commissioner because this is something the county can do much more than we can do. We always support it. But we need to try to get support from the Fish and Wildlife, but also from our governor and that level of government to try to give us a possibility to manage our deer issues in clear that county, period.
The R Street crossed street.
Pardon?
The R Street crossed street, though.
We'll have to see what happens. Not gonna be easy. So, the other item has to do with the agenda that we're working on. And I'd like to propose, and we don't decide it tonight, but we need to discuss and work it out. After the report of officers, with that discussion from the officers and the mayor and the city council, the public vice director, we have a lot of times had discussions, let's do this, and it's a great idea, and we did it. That's wrong. We should not be going that way. We need to get an area of new business. So that the next time we're having, you already, when you leave, you'll know what's, at least the main things that are gonna be on the agenda. It'll make it much more streamlined, be more organized, it'll fit Robert's rules of order guidelines. And I think we'll be happy with, we'll have a much better process of clearing those. And many really great ideas are brought up. We need to have those as agenda items so we can actually do that. Because if we don't do it that way, the public doesn't know it till after we decide it. And that's completely against the way we should be.
Or that's, that means we're much more efficient.
It should be. That's the whole goal. And I think those are the name two. We're gonna be working with its chief and with Pat on these, these parks because there, there's quite a few more people trying to use the parks after closing hours. And they're vandalizing restrooms and equipment, toys, playgrounds and things like that. We need to get ahead of this or it will completely overwhelm us. All you have to do is look at Portland and Seattle. They didn't get ahead of it. And they've got a real serious issue, so we need to coordinate that and work hard on it. And with that, unless there's, yes, Steve.
Ari, would tonight be a good time to do any consideration regarding this, this request regarding Dr. Ogden?
Yes.
Can we put that on?
Yeah, I would, I would recommend instead of taking action, because I've talked to the mayor about doing something similar, but in smaller for other citizens, which I do like this. But maybe just designating this to the events committee to have a regular, I mean, this is great, but to seek those applications, to seek out those individuals that stand out in the community. Because like this one, you know, waiting for somebody to tell us that somebody's been doing great, it's, you know, we could do better. We could do better. So maybe assigning this to the events committee for review, totally great idea. But I think, how can we continue it moving forward?
There's, there's one thing, you know, we have the banners at the high school, students graduating things. But other cities use local hero banners the same way. And I would think the first one would be Dr. Ogden when we get that event committee to working on it. That would be a goal. I mean, but those people honor the banners and, and so they're recognized all year long for great work on the city, a lot of them.
Okay.
Yeah. Very good. We'll go now to public comment. I think there's a number of people with public comments. Terry.
All these guys seem to be in the same problem. I don't live on that street. Terry Lou, 160 Chatfield. I gave you all lots of time to get the airport fully up to date, running to go. I'm back. I hear we got something gonna finally go next month. I've been at this for nine years. If we were private, we'd be broke. The city can work a lot faster than nine years to get a fuel tank on the ground. I think we've got enough people behind it in the committee and enough know-how in the committee to get everything done. We just need to quit sitting on our butts.
It's not sitting on our butts. It's a committee that changes plan every time you need.
Because we, because we have a person who's sat in Pat's chair and we have a consultant that attend the meetings and then go change everything and then come back. And it's something totally different than what we needed and what we had agreed upon. At one point in time, we had like four or five different versions of the exact same thing up here on the wall. And we hadn't voted on anything but the first one. We need to get a game plan. We need a meeting set up for the airport committee. I would think that would come under you, Pat. Welcome aboard.
Well, Pat's already talked about that and we're gonna use a long-range plan for the airport, so.
We've, we've been talking for that, like I say, for nine years, as of next.
Well, Pat, I've been here for, I don't even, don't even think it's been nine months.
No, because we've been talking about it, the public on this airport committee and everything. And Mike's been in meetings, everything. I went through two mayors that threw me out of the office because I was even thinking of something to come in and go over their desk. When Mike came in, he was on board with the plan, but we haven't gotten anything really done other than we know what we need to do, what we need to make it as a viable airport.
We've also gotten some grant funding to help support that and contracted some of that work.
And the money we have in the bank right now, we're almost ready to start losing it again, according to Gina. So we got to use it or lose it.
Sorry, that's.
Here's a funny.
Yeah. She says there's more money coming up that we can apply for, but we gotta use the money that we have and show progress before we can go ask for any more money.
Don't you have a meeting with Gina tomorrow?
It's Thursday.
Oh, it's Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know it was advised that I'm already.
Yeah, right. I heard that you were already booked up for, well, for this bid process for the construction of the fuel tank. And, yeah, we're, we're gonna be meeting with Gina and talk about the airport and also talk about the observatory and a few of the things that we're doing here in Golden Tail.
Yeah, but I, you can come and talk to me anytime. I'm more glad to listen. I'll be a straight share with you on my opinion, so.
I taught you to that one day and we'll get together again. But I just wanna see something happen after, before the end of the year. And it sounds like maybe we'll have a piece of concrete on the ground.
Well, hopefully we're the piece of concrete. The power will be, I, by the end of the year, it should all be up and running. That's the goal. I don't think it should take more than 30 days of all the projects are here.
No, that's about the timeframe I was given for the whole project.
Thirty, thirty days?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like I say, I've been at it for nine years.
About nine years.
So we're a little behind about our third.
Anybody else for public comment? Terry?
The only guy in the room.
Guy Turiel.
Can you be mayor, council, staff? My name's Guy Turiel. I'm at 323 West Byers. And you're gonna find out a lot of the people after me are on Byers Street. First off, I'd like to thank Pat and Dustin. They've been my person I could chew on their ears about all the issues, which I'm gonna go over next, about Byers. The first issue I came up with was dust. The dust has been very, very severe on our road. It's, it's to the point that one of my neighbors who doesn't wanna come here, who's one of those people doesn't like confrontations, but he talked to me about it. He had to move himself and his daughter out because they have respiratory problems. Talked to Dustin about it. Dustin talked to the contractor. They said they're supposed to be watering. Rarely do we see them watering our road. Today was the first time my wife and I seen them. Never over the weekend. You say it's gravel, not that much dust. No, when you get somebody who's doing 35 down Byers, even if it's gravel, they're still doing fast down the road. It's kicking up a lot of dust. My vehicles are severe. And that's gonna get to another point, why I can't wash them. Safety. There's been no safety really, other than the entrances to Byers. No cones up. We just had a vehicle that got damaged by a excavator that was parked along Byers, right in front of my house, in fact. It basically hit it hard enough and she's only doing about 10. It blew the airbags on it, tore the front end right off of it. And it's, I don't know if they moved it or not.
The excavator's gone.
Okay, well, the excavator's gone, yeah. It's up on High Street now. But needs to say, there's been no really safety going on. We don't know if Byers is closed on the east end, the west end, or on High Street. I come up to come home from somewhere and I don't know which way I'm supposed to go. I had to call my wife. She has to go out front. Okay, they got the road closed here. They got the road closed there. There's been no traffic control whatsoever. Nobody with stop signs or cones. They just say road closed except for local access. Which way do I go? Next one is curb. And I've already discussed with, this with Pat. The curb is a rolling curb. We discussed in one of the first meetings about putting speed bumps in the road, but we're told no. You can't do that because of the fact of snow plowing. But yet, every single driveway on Byers now has a speed bump in front of it. We had to clear the snow in front of our house, but we can't use our little snow plows or whatever. I'm gonna have to be down there either with my snow blower or with a shovel or a broom or whatever to clear my driveway. And then also, it adds to the fact that sometimes I had to get, because my driveway's angled and on a slope. I'm gonna have to get a little speed to get up there. Well, I'm gonna hit that curb and that's gonna affect my wife with our backs and whatnot and with my recent hip replacement, so. There is a proper driveway. If you go down Third Street, there's a building that says Quonset right on the front. There's a roll curb right there and it drops down to your traditional driveway. So it could have been done or it can be done.
That's your three minutes.
Oh, man. You want I give my wife three minutes?
Everybody has three minutes.
Okay. So we, okay, I got her three. Time. We were told we were able to use our driveways for 48 hour, within 48 hours of laying the curb. That didn't happen. We were told that three times. Three times I moved my vehicles up on the High Street. And twice we were told, after I had to either call Pat or Dustin. Oh, the contract failed through or the subcontractor, the cement trucks weren't running or something like that. But yet, I'm shifting my vehicles back and forth, trying to be compliant and not use my driveway. We finally got to use our driveway. Our curb was laid on Thursday. We got to use it today. That's more than 48 hours. And again, talking with Patty says it should put 78 hours, 70, or seven days, seven days. But, and then goes back to time too. We were told our road's gonna be done in time for the fair. Well, that was last month. We're going in our fourth month of construction, June, July, August, September. Four months for our road being torn out. Now, great, we're gonna have a really nice road at the end. But it's been four months, which is ridiculous. It puts a wear and strain, strain on all of the residents that live along there. And it's been, to be quite frank, a pain in the tokus. And then last but not least, and I've worked with Pat on this and Dustin, they broke the water line going to my house. They didn't bother telling the city about it. It dumped sand and gravel into my water system. It clogged up a lot of my valves to the point that I had no water coming out at all. And it gets back to the dirt and the dust. I'm afraid to wash my cars. Now Terry's thinking of coming up and doing wet sanding on his car, just using my garden hose because I'm still getting sand and gravel out of my faucets. About once a week, I had to go in and clean them out. They start clogging up is what happens. And I had to remove the aerators and whatnot. We had to take a valve out of my main kitchen sink, the diverter valve to go to my sprayer because it was filled up with sand and gravel. My washing machine for clothes washing was filled with sand and gravel. I probably took close to a cup over this last month since they broke my water line. Again, the contractor failed to notify the city. And the way I found about it, I come home and I go to use my faucet, actually, my wife did. There's no water. And I'm calling my neighbors. Whiskey Tango Fox Drive, what's going on, guys? And then my neighbor tells me, oh, they broke your water line. Didn't they tell you? No. So, again, thank you. I need to chew on somebody else's ear, poor Pat and Dustin. I've been chewing on their ears, but now I'm dumping on the city. Get our road fixed and get it fixed properly. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Yeah?
Step ahead of you.
Probably better that way.
Well, the road looking good, but it's taking a long time. My problem is.
Name and address.
Well, Raymond Wagner 606 North Cross Lane, Golden Tail, Washington. My problem is I've got a car that's got a 90-inch wheelbase and a 6-inch clearance. And I can't even hardly get my pickup over that. It's not done yet. But it's got a four, four and a half inch curb and a nine-inch drop back eight feet. We can't clear it. We're putting a sidewalk in behind it five feet. We're already three or four inches higher than we were in the old street. We need to have a plan to clear six inches on a 90-inch wheelbase to see that we can use the driveway. My suggestion is take ground off the top two or three inches of that curb where that driveway is. Lower the sidewalk, slope it down a little bit. We can maybe use it. But we need some drawing before we cover it up.
Thanks. Yes. No, okay. I'm gonna make this short and sweet. I'm Steve Kraus. I built Cross Lane. Problem is going to be, I have a Honda, okay? It sits off the ground four inches. I can't even drive it in my driveway. I can't take it out. That's the problem. I really appreciate getting this asphalt in. We need it. We've been driving through potholes forever. We didn't need a curb. We didn't need a sidewalk. We're not in town where everything is flat like you need that. All we needed was asphalt. You could take that money in. You could fix your sidewalks. We don't need it. It's causing us more problems than good. All we needed was the asphalt replaced. So this is gonna be a problem and I'm not sure how I'm gonna solve it, but I need to get in and out. I developed that property, three other people built homes there, and now I'm stuck. So I don't know what you guys are gonna do, but something's gonna have to happen or I'm not even gonna be able to get in and out. Thank you very quickly. Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, I'm Mike Isaacson. I'm at 228 West Byers. I'd like to agree with everything they've said, dust issues, curb issues and stuff. I don't wanna get into the details of all mine just because I'm on limited time. I'm hoping I can work with the project manager and the administrator to get these things resolved. But from the beginning, this project wasn't executed very well. I mean, I get a notice, an email saying there's a meeting at 5:30 on a Monday. I had to work. I said, hey, can I call in? Can I do a Zoom? Nope. No option. So I'm like, all right, I guess I'm getting stuck with whatever. Since then, we've heard no other feedback on it. When the project started, I met with the administrator and the project manager and they came over to my place. And I was asking what the, what it was gonna be and what was gonna happen. And they showed me some of the elevations. They were pretty extreme. And then they started talking about trying to my driveway, threatening me with codes, you know, the driveway code. I mean, this is no way to kick off a project like this. I mean, this is, we're a community. I mean, I've known most of you guys for a very long time. You know, we all like to get along. We like to get along with each other. And here, this is the treatment we get. I'm not very happy with that. So, anyway, they said they were gonna try and work on the road. Heard nothing back. Talked to the crews. The crews said, oh, yeah, we made an, we made a change in the road. Called the project manager, project. Called the project manager. Project says, yeah, we did it. Well, how come I never heard? Guess I was just supposed to assume. So anyway, pretty disappointed in that. I'd really like it if you guys could see the project, too, because these curbs are crazy. So like on my driveway, just for one example, one end's 19 inches level, the other end's 10 inches. So somehow we've got to transition that to get me into the driveway. I mean, 19 inches is pretty big. I'm not the worst. There's one person that's worse than me. So anyway. I'm real happy for the project. You know, I'd like to see Goldendale improve and happy the money went local. Like to see local contractors, but you know, I'm hoping that there's some lessons learned from this. I'm not just wasting my time. You know, that maybe these lessons will be taken to heart. The next time you do a project, you'll work with the locals that are there, not just try and ram it down our throat and say, here, this is what you get. Here's your ordinance. So I was pretty disappointed in that. I mean, especially, you know, we got somebody new, wanted to be a part of the community, wanted him to be, you know, involved in things, and then we get treated like this, so. The safety concerns they mentioned, I'm glad they did, because yeah, that was an issue. So everything they said, I can support, and I'm hoping we can work together and resolve issues with my property and yeah. I'm not sure what else to say, but you guys really should come check it out. Get involved in some of these projects and know what's going on. So thank you all for everything. Thank you for volunteering. It's a tough gig, so.
So I know we have a lot to do with how it works, but can we talk about that first thing in our meeting tomorrow? Maybe a little side tour, because I lost. Steve, do you remember what that'd be?
One more. I may get my two cents into. I'm Tina Kraus. I'm Steve's wife, and yes, we built the road, and it is considered a road, and it has a street name, and that's why I don't understand why we're getting a big curb and sidewalk across the front of it. Most streets dip down and are smooth. We do have a 35-foot fifth wheel. We have, I have a lowrider motorcycle that sits extremely low. We have a Honda that's very low. We need a lot of width. We need a slope that will work, and the curb they have there now is just not going to work. When you get a wide sidewalk, the whole street, the way, the design they used works very, very well in the middle of town where everything's flat. Byers Street goes up on one side, down on the other.
Sure.
And everything is sloped so that you're either, your front wheels are going down before your back wheels are coming up, so you're going to high center, and on the other side of the street, on these guys' side of the street, their nose is hitting before they're going to get down their driveway. The design just is not going to work at the end of our driveways. And I really, really appreciate the fact that we're finally getting a new street. We've been waiting for years. We're thrilled to death. Wasn't happy with the communication. We got our letter about a meeting the day after the meeting happened. Our communication with what's going on with it, we've tried really hard to be patient and cooperate, but there's no communication other than the flyers that came out three times, and it didn't happen the way it was supposed to happen. You know, we have plans. We've given up a lot of activities all summer long because there was just no getting in and out. So while I really appreciate all the hard work with the new street, it's, you know, it's wonderful that we're getting it. We definitely need some adjustments, so thank you.
Mayor, I just have a couple of questions, because I'm not in the public works committee, so I'd like to hear more on the next council meeting about the project. I know Pat is inheriting several projects. I heard about an apartment complex that was approved in town with not enough parking that was inherited. I have a question, why there's a curb to a road that's a recognized road, and several other issues. And is the contractor bonded? Are they insured to cover damage, things like that? And as well as more information on the delays, so we know.
I have an idea about the road. I have to go up there and look.
Right, I know. It's a new inherited project for you, but I think there's enough concern there that I'm concerned about if it's going to get finished before winter.
So we're going to talk about maybe at the next, or tomorrow then, at the public works meeting?
Yeah.
I actually have a question about the rolled curbing. Is that a cheaper way of doing it or something? Because my personal opinion, I don't like them. I think they're very rough getting up into your driveway as it is, even on flat land.
Well, that was designed long before I.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about just this project. I'm talking about all the projects, the newer projects that have happened in our town. I don't agree with the rolled curves, and I want to know why have we gone to that? And I know there's a lot of other people, too.
I have no idea why.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Part of the issue is the city doesn't have their own construction standards. And that's something that I know I talked to Dustin since I've been here, about we need to develop our own construction standards that are approved by city council, by type of curb, sidewalk, infrastructure, the dows in the ground.
Rather than choosing every project.
Yeah, and anywhere where you're building a road, there's always grade issues, and I get that's supposed to be challenging. But, and sometimes you can lessen that, because sometimes it's just impossible to take it all out. Are you linked up with the road or you're down again and not sitting head to head?
That's the work to do. I know you're very knowledgeable on the public work side, so.
Yeah. Dustin, how big is the curb lift?
It's supposed, it's supposed to be between four and four-and-a-half inches on standard curb, rolled curb. And actually, rolled curb's more expensive than standard curb, just because it takes more concrete to build rolled curb. And then also you put in a five-inch sidewalk instead of a four-inch sidewalk, because typically you put in, oh, a thicker sidewalk wherever there's a driveway, but because you have rolled curb, so you can access everywhere, you have to put in a thicker sidewalk everywhere.
So why was that designed that way then?
That was at the direction that I received, based upon the West Neighborhood Project. It just went in. That was kind of the form that we were trying to follow.
So, I mean, I think you guys can do your own thing, because I'm no professional, but if concrete has not been poured yet?
It's all been, all the, the curb's been poured.
Yes. May I stand up again? Sure. You can't take the curb out. Oh, Steve Kraus. Can't take the curb out, that's true, but you don't have to put the sidewalk in. You think about the angle getting down to my house, now the sidewalk's going to go out another, what, four feet more?
Five feet.
And make that even steeper. It's going to create more of a problem. Why not just leave the sidewalk out? We don't need it anyway. Then you can go ahead, you can repair other sidewalks, and the money's spent that we don't even need. I mean, I worked for the state highway department. I did road maintenance 30 years. I do know what I'm talking about. I did this kind of work all the time. So we're going to have a problem with the curb in front of my place. I know that. And I don't want to get in problem with the sheriff's department or the police, but that curb is not staying there. One way or the other, in front of my driveway, it's coming out.
We're in the top of it.
Well, one way or the other, I did this maintenance 30 years. I do know how to do it. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? I think we've got everybody covered. We'll take all these comments into consideration. That's the thing about a very complete report that we're getting now. It will help us a lot to look at the comments and talk with the construction company, and of course with Dustin as well. Where there's fixes are where there's not fixes, so we can give you some answers. Probably right now, the best we can do on a Tuesday night. Anything else? If not, we need a motion to adjourn.
Is there anybody on Zoom for public comment?
Ah, yes, please. Anyone on public comments on Zoom?
Nope.
Thank you, standing up.
Okay, so just send Steve.
I moved. I'll start this.
And moved and taken it to adjourn to the council for September 6, 2022. Thank you, and appreciate everybody's patience with this program tonight.